Welcome to the 2022 Sunnyvale City Council District Five Candidates Forum. My name is Elaine Manley. I'm co-president of the League of Women Voters of Cupertino and Sunnyvale, and I'll be the moderator for this event. This forum is hosted by the Sunnyvale neighbors of Arbor, including La Linda, which is also known as Snail. And the forum will run about ninety minutes, and it is being recorded. Before we get into tonight's topic, we do want to go over a couple of things about a Zoom webinar. As you can see, you are in listen-only mode, and so the moderator and the candidates will be on video. So if you'd like to submit any questions, just use that Q and A function. Hover on your Zoom screen, and then you'll see the Q and A and type in your question. We'll take questions as time permits. I would like to say that fortunately Snail has collected a lot of questions in advance. So we have quite a few to get started with, and once we've completed those, we will go through the other questions. If you have any technical issues, please email techsupport@LWBCS.org. And we are once again recording this, and we will post it to our website in the next few days, LWBCS.org. So if I may just say a few things about the League Women Voters. We have been working to empower voters and defend democracy for over a hundred years. We actually have been doing this since February of nineteen twenty. The League is a nonpartisan political organization for women and men, and we encourage informed and active participation in our government. Please know that we never support or oppose political parties or candidates. We do have two set and distinct roles, voter service and public education, which is what today's forum is about. We also have action and advocacy, which is a five O and C four. It is a different organization. So under our voter service and education, we do candidate forums. We will go over the pros and cons of the ballot measures. We help people register voters, and we help create a website called VotersEdge.org, which I'll cover a little bit more in more detail, but it's a great one-stop shop for finding information about both candidates and the pros and cons. So how do you vote? Well, the ballots are supposed to be mailed the week of October ninth, and everyone's going to receive one in the mail, and you can return it by mail or by a ballot drop box or through a vote center. So remember, once again, we don't have polling places anymore. We do now use vote centers, and the great news is they're open like four days before the election, so it's really great. To find your closest vote center, you'd go into the Santa Clara County government website SCCGov.org. And then ROV means Registrar of Voters, and they have a whole elections section. You click on Find My Vote Center, you put in your address, and you click Go, and it will show you the vote centers near you if you'd like to drop off your ballot at a vote center or if you'd like to go and vote there. Where do you register to vote or check registration status? This is also a good tool, RegisterToVote.ca.gov. There's also a QR code right here that you can utilize to go on your phone to find it right away. And you can either register, pre-register us for those who are sixteen, so under the age of eighteen, and you can check your registration status right there. If you type in your information and you get the word retry, you really should re-register because it means you're not in the system correctly. So ballot has quite a few things on it. How do you find factual, succinct, comprehensive, understandable information? Good news, we've got a great website called VotersEdge.org. This was created by the League of Women Voters of California and a company called Maplight. And what we do is we provide the fact information on the ballot measure and the candidates. They provide the information on the money behind the people and behind the ballot measures. So it's, like you say, it's a great one-stop place to find all that information. So District Five. So we just went through the twenty twenty forum, sorry, twenty twenty redistricting, and the commission had to redraw the lines. And so District Five is slightly changed from before, but just so you can see in the map, these are the lines. You can see one oh one and El Camino. This is Matilda and Mary, and so that would be the people that are District Five. All of the residents in District Five get to vote for this district. You don't live in District Five, you don't get to vote for this district. So that is who's on here, and then some additional election information. There's so much on the ballot. We aren't the only great website, so we do want to promote that there's Ballotpedia and so many others to go through. We would encourage to take a shot at this or go back and look at the recording to get the links. So we do have candidates for, two candidates for District Five. We have Satyam Davae and Richard Melinger. And I want to know a little bit about the rules that they have agreed to because it is slightly different than we have done in the past. We have, let's see here. We have been requested by Snail to let the candidates answer their questions one at a time. So we have about fourteen questions, excuse me. We have about fourteen questions to ask of each of them. Satyam's name was referred in a random drawing. We'll go first and answer all the questions. We'll go back and forth. Then he will go and stay off-camera, off-site, not listening, just as Richard is doing right now. Richard will come up, and then we'll ask him those questions as well. So it should be a very interesting forum. The end of those questions will bring both of the candidates back, and we'll ask your Q and A questions this time. So with that, let's take a look at the things that the candidates have agreed to. They've agreed to the letting us ask them questions. Some of the answers will be ninety seconds, some sixty, and some thirty. There will be a timer box, and the timer will show the candidates when they're down to thirty seconds, fifteen seconds. And of course, at this point of stop, they'll be asked to stop. So the candidates have all agreed to be responsive to the questions and civil in their responses, not interrupt the other candidate or the moderator, and really not make any remarks that are personal in nature or directed at any individual. With the permission of the candidates, I will be calling them by their first name. So with that, we'd like to bring on Satyam Davae. And let me bring down the slides, and we welcome Satyam. So welcome to the forum. We appreciate you joining us tonight. And the first question that's being asked, as you know, is why are you qualified to be the council member for District Five?
So that's pretty easy, actually. I've been resident of District Five, lived in the same house twenty-plus years now. We raised two children here, have gone through the public education system here. So I think, and you know, I've actually even worked in District Six for most of my time. So I know both of the districts quite well, including, you know, running out in the levees or, you know, going to downtown from walking here. And on top of that, I'm new to politics, but I do have quite a bit of experience in my professional life, dealing with federal agencies, NASA, NOAA, and working with the union on daily basis. So, and I manage projects, you know, totaling hundreds of millions of dollars over the last two decades. So I'm aware of, you know, how to kind of work through the government system, even at the federal level, and work with different perspective or different ideas that are coming in and, you know, kind of make all the teams come together for a common goal of making, you know, making whatever we're, whether it's a satellite or an instrument or something, and taking it to conclusion. I have six launches under my belt, successful ones. So with those, I'm pretty qualified to run for the office.
Thank you. So the next question is, how have you already volunteered and served the city? And how long have you lived in the neighborhood you live in now? I know you mentioned you've been a resident for a long time. I don't know if it's been in the same neighborhood.
It's actually been in the same house, lived in, actually, and I've worked longer in Sunnyvale because I started working in Sunnyvale before we got a place here. So it has been more than twenty years. My, as I said, I'm new to politics. My involvement has been through, you know, volunteering in schools, you know, coaching soccer and various kids, you know, activities, and just being, you know, participant in the daily life of Sunnyvale in District Five and Six.
Very good. All right, and what contributions did you make to the district mapping process? And what were some of the details of the boundaries?
So I wanted to make, I think, I wanted to make a correction. I think initially when you showed District Five, you said it goes all the way down to El Camino, but it only goes to the railroad tracks basically here on that one. So just a correction.
Thank you.
I did participate and commented on the district maps and, you know, looked at it and voted on the ones we ended up having, so.
Okay, very good. And then the next one is for District Five. What are the three most important concerns that you've heard from the communities in your district?
I think the three things I've heard is the, the character of Sunnyvale, and at least in District Five, is starting to change due to a lot of the office spaces that have gone down with the period development. And, you know, people are seeing that, you know, people are having harder time doing alternate commute, especially around MOD and Matilda throughout the day, pretty much. And also that, you know, walkability has suffered also from that. The other things I hear is that there's a lot of construction going on all around and a lot of the, like, road closures that are happening, that are impacting people's, you know, daily life. Those are the kind of items that I've heard directly from our residents here.
Very good. All right, and how do you interact with city staff and commissions?
So I do listen to the meetings that are recorded, city meetings, city council meetings. I also, you know, whenever needed, I contact my officials in the city services and get them to help and, you know, help clear things up that are either, you know, it's a tree trimming required or, you know, reporting road potholes and things like that. So that's how I deal with the city, and they've been very great. There's been no issue whenever I've asked, and this is one of the things, I really love Sunnyvale because it is a very, you know, kind of walkable and kind of has its own vibrancy that you don't find in a lot of other cities. And I want to preserve that as time goes on, so our kids can also stay here and enjoy the Sunnyvale that I have.
Very good. All right, so from your perspective, what works well in the city management? And what do you think needs improvement?
So I think public safety definitely works pretty well because we are constantly ranked as some of the safest cities, and I get phone calls from my family, like, hey, Sunnyvale's in your top twenty again. Also, a lot of the city services work really well, like I was just mentioning, you know, whether it's tree trimming or filling up potholes or whatnot. The where I think we can make an improvement is maybe try to preserve the character we already have. And it seems like lately it's been kind of more and more going toward the development that's going on. Like, for example, last Saturday, there was no farmer's market because there was a big construction work going on. And for the weeks, you know, few weeks prior to that, the farmer's market has been shrunk to like half a parking lot and a half a street, again, because construction is going on. And there's, and also there are trucks going in, things starting at two AM, three AM in the morning, you know, where they start the work. So I think that we're kind of going toward away from this, this character that already exists here, and I want to try to preserve it.
Very good. Good. All right, and next question is regarding the budget. So let's say a District Five resident comes to you with funding request for a multicultural event. How do you handle it?
So I would look into, I think, there is neighborhood funding that's starting to come through, and it's up to a thousand dollars, and that was one of the council items I saw. So that would be my first place. If I was a council person, then I would look into that and see if we can fund that through that or go through the rec services and see if there is any budget that the park services can provide to, you know, facilitate things going on in the park area that if that's where they want to have the cultural event.
Okay. All right, and now next topic is Caltrain. So what's happening with the Caltrain grade separation, and why is this project necessary?
So Caltrain is electrifying, and that's necessary because, you know, the greenhouse gases we are generating, and we need to stop that, and that's why it's necessary. And what was the other part? Sorry.
Sure, so it's just what's happening. So if there's anything more you want to say about the electrification?
I think it's, it's a long time coming. I do use Caltrain all the time, travel to San Francisco, go see Warriors games, and, you know, go to the SF MoMA or Palo Alto for work. They have a shuttle service that'll take me to my work, you know, if I just walk it from here. So I think we need to have it and continue to have it, and electrification will make it even cleaner than it already is.
Good. Good. All right, so let's see. Next topic is village centers. So what are village-centered developments, and tell us about any in District Five?
Village-centered developments are this idea of having a mixed housing and commercial, light commercial that people can, you know, kind of basically what I'm saying, you know, having a community living right near where they are potentially working and having the facilities in that same area for them to, you know, so they don't have to commute as much and be able to live with parks, be able to live, you know, a much more relaxed or vibrant life than they would.
Good. Good. Now, this next question you have ninety seconds for. The others have been sixty, but now you've got a ninety-second one here. So what study issues in the pipeline for District Five would you support? And what new ones would you propose, and why?
So I think the ones I would support is looking into with the Moffett Park Development Plan that's updated, that how that's going to impact the traffic flow through all of Sunnyvale, and especially in District Five and Six. And on top of that, I would be looking to support environmental initiatives that would be studying how the development that's going on over there is going to impact the wetlands that are there. And then over a longer term, when the sea level does rise, that how it's going to impact that development and how we can prepare ahead of time on what we build there before, you know, it becomes a flooding problem, you know, twenty, thirty years from now.
Good. All right, now this next question is fairly short, so we'll limit it to thirty seconds. So regarding schools, what would you say to a parent in District Five that's asking about the need to have a high school in District Five?
I would definitely support the idea, especially as the more development and more housings are, is being put into District Five and Six. It just makes it a longer commute for kids to go down to, you know, Fremont High. My kids have been doing it and are still doing it now. So I would definitely support having another high school either in District Five or Six, so kids wouldn't have to drive or walk or be taken to thirty, you know, three, five miles away.
Good. Good. All right, now we're back to sixty seconds, and I'm my timekeeper. I appreciate him bearing with us as we change some of the time, so this will be sixty.
He's been very good so far.
Yes, yes. All right, so if elected, how would you get various input from neighborhoods in the city? And how would you make sure their concerns are included in council decisions?
So first, I would talk to the individual councilperson from different districts. And then I would host office, open office hours in central areas or in each of the districts, especially in our neighborhood here, to kind of get their input. And if needed, you know, use the social media to get their input. And this is, this is a full, you know, it has to be a full-pronged attack, not just one thing or the other because people, you know, we have all age of population here, and they all get their information differently, and you have to reach out in all those places or in all those ways to get them and get their input and understand what they really want and, you know, what we can do for them.
Okay. Good, now we'll drop to a thirty-second answer. What are some of the communities of interest in District Five?
That, I'm not, as in, like, the parks we have, or, sorry?
When we were doing the redistricting, there was a significant emphasis on communities of interest. And so some were identified in District Five. The question was, what are some of the communities of interest in District Five to see if you're aware of who they might be?
So we have our neighborhoods all around here. I participate in our neighborhood, you know, I think quarterly or semi-annual meetings we have or have a picnic. There's also a fairly decent Hispanic population that's located all along MOD. And that's, you know, I would want to either start learning Spanish myself or have folks who are bilingual that I know and take them with me and, you know, get their input. And also there's Hindu temple. I'm not hundred percent sure if it's on District Six or Five, but that's another, you know, South Asian community place together.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, good. And so the next one is a sixty-second answer. With the construction of three thousand new units on Duane and over three hundred new units on Santa Luis, so what plans do you have to minimize traffic congestion?
So I think we need to start, one of the main things is we need to, Sunnyvale needs to start having its own shuttle service. I mean, VTA is good, but it's very limited in what it does. What it does is, is pretty good, as in, you know, fifty-five takes kids all the way from District Six and Five to high school, and they do a great job of that, but it's not wide enough where people can, you know, can rely on it on an hourly or half-hour basis to go places. I would start a shuttle service, try to coordinate that with the local cities like Montju and Santa Clara and Palo that already have it, and learn from what they've done and kind of use that resource and the shuttle service to get people from and to wherever they need to, in a safe, reliable manner. And also promote alternate commutes, as in bike or any kind of alternate transportation people want to use. So potentially give them, you know, have a, not just lanes, but even have designated lanes that they can use and be, feel safe doing alternate commute.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now this last one, you do have ninety seconds to answer, and it is the last question of the series. So how can the water usage be reduced in Fair Oaks Park with the renovations?
So I think with the, water needs to be used less with, and we want to start with planting native plants that are already drought-resistant, and that's what we have in our yard, and that's what we're striving for, that we do need to have some amount of recreational area where kids can run around and have, you know, have playtime. But I think going with drought-resistant plants, minimizing, even removing some of the grass there and replacing it with turf and just teaching people conservation and also using reclaimed water, which would not be, you know, we don't need to use potable water to water those plants and keep it vibrant.
Very good. Well, thank you for going through that series with me. What we'll have you do is if you can log out or if you want to just turn everything off so that you can't see or hear anything, well, we bring Richard on. And we know you are a person of your word. You told me you would not listen to his answers for this part. So you'll be welcome to watch the recording afterwards to hear both of you answer each of the questions. I look forward to seeing you as soon as we've completed asking these of Richard.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to take a moment now and bring Richard on. I see he is, there he is. Hello, Richard, welcome.
Hi there. Great to be here. How are you all doing?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. So what we'll do is we'll go through the same questions that I just asked Satyam, and you'll have different amounts of time to answer the questions. And the first question, as you know, was the one we gave to you, and you've got ninety seconds to answer it. And it's, why are you qualified to be our council member for District Five?
All right, well, thank you very much, and thank you all very much for hosting this. I believe I'm the candidate who's best qualified to serve District Five for the very simple reason that I've got the experience and the values. I've been actively engaged in Sunnyvale local government as an activist, as a city commissioner, as a member of civil society organizations for the past five years. I've spent four years on our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission, including three years as chair. And in that time, I've worked hard to improve traffic safety in our city, to expand on the Active Transportation Plan envisioned zero. I proposed and had major study issues approved, such as the study issue to improve bicycle and pedestrian access to the Sunnyvale Caltrain Station, especially from the north. Other things that I have done in that time include serving as vice president of the Sunnyvale Democratic Club. I served on their board for four years, four years on the Board of Livable Sunnyvale, our local civil society organization promoting transit, housing, and sustainability, which I had the honor of chairing from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. And I also served on the City Charter Review Commission back in twenty eighteen, where we fixed the glitch in the charter that led to the double election in twenty sixteen. And as a result of the work we did and the passage of Measure L, the city actually saved three million dollars this year because the twenty twenty-one vacancy did not have to go to a special election, and council was able to appoint. So I really think that I've got the experience to step in and serve effectively from day one. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, so now the next series of questions will be one-minute answers, so sixty seconds. And this question is, how have you, and you've already answered this, so you can expand on it. How have you already volunteered and served the city? And how long have you lived in the neighborhood you live in now?
Excellent question. So the neighborhood I've lived in now, I've lived in for about four years now with about a six-month break. I live over in the Canary Park neighborhood by California and Mary. I actually had the opportunity, I just became a homeowner there four months ago. Some of the ways that I've served, you know, a lot of what I've done in the civil society organizations I belong to, the Heritage Museum, Livable Sunnyvale, the Dems Club, has been sort of behind-the-scenes work. Yes, I've taken a public face. I've helped run forums in the Dems Club, you know, informational sessions. But I've also, you know, I helped draft the original bylaws for Livable Sunnyvale. I've contributed numerous process improvements to the Sunnyvale Democratic Club bylaws and standing rules. And so from my perspective, you know, that sort of service is really important because that's similar to what you're going to be doing on council. You need to have an understanding of how these rules operate and how to effectively craft rules and policies and present information for the public.
Thank you. So the next question is, what contributions did you make to the district mapping process? And what are some of the details of the boundaries?
Okay, so this is something that brings back some very sharp memories. So I actually submitted one of the finalist maps for the district maps. I didn't get mine, but it's a one census block off from what we actually got. And so our boundaries are essentially, you know, Caltrain tracks to one oh one with the Mary Manor Mobile Home Park and the Ensignal Park Apartments cut off as well and in District Six, as well as the Fair Oaks Mobile Home Park. Everything else between Caltrain and one oh one is basically us. And so one of the things that I actually did is I worked very closely with Valerie Suarez, who's the chair of Snail, and with Judy Pavlik in the Sunnyvale Mobile Home Parks Neighborhood Association to resolve, help resolve an issue that Valerie caught, where the census blocks around the Mobile Home Park, the Fair Oaks Home Park, were pulling in homes from Snail. And so we were able to propose a solution that kept the Mobile Home Park in District Six with the other mobile homes and kept all the homes and condos south of one oh one in District Five with us. And so that's something I'm very proud of.
And that's that little notch in there.
That's the infamous Fair Oaks notch, yes.
Yes, in the map, yes. Excellent. All right, and the next question is, what are the three most important concerns you've heard from the communities in District Five?
So a lot of concern about sustainability, about the drought, about water use. A lot of concern about sort of, about traffic. You know, Borregus in particular is a very high-speed, dangerous road, but you look at our district and it is just carved up by these very high-speed, very unsafe roads. You know, Matilda, Fair Oaks, Wolf, one oh one, the Central Expressway. As a result of that, it's very difficult to get around on bike or by foot, and it's not safe. You know, we had a car go into the house at the end of Borregus about a year ago. Guy sleeping in his bed, missed him by inches. And then finally, the cost of housing. It's devastating our communities. It's really hollowing out our communities and our neighborhoods. It's forcing longtime residents to leave, and, you know, it's, it's really causing tremendous harm. So those are the three big things I'd say.
Very good. All right, and how do you interact with city staff and commissions?
So as a city commissioner, I routinely interact with city staff. You know, as chair of the B-PAC, a big part of what I was doing was working to ensure that we had a good working relationship with staff. There had been some tensions over the years that had been built, that had built up, and I worked very hard to help try and re-establish a solid working relationship there. You know, the other thing is, as part of the civil society organizations that I belong to, we would routinely engage with members of other commissions, such as the Planning Commission, the Sustainability Commission, the Housing Commission, on various issues coming before them that were of importance to our organization. So the Dems Club and Livable Sunnyvale both did, I've done a lot of work around housing and sustainability, you know, around issues like the REACH Code, like Moffett Park, a variety of different things. And so we were constantly engaging with members of the different boards and commissions and with members of council, you know, to advocate for our positions and to fight for, you know, well, a more livable Sunnyvale.
All right, thank you. And so what works well in the city management now, and what do you think needs improvement?
Okay, very good question. One thing that I would think works really well in city management right now is the twenty-year budget. That has saved us a massive amount of grief over the years. It means that we're really well-prepared for the challenges. Uh that has saved us a massive amount of grief over the years. It means that we're really well prepared for the challenges that have been thrown at us. Uh, you know, Santa Clara has a structural budget deficit. There are cities in this state that have gone bankrupt very recently. Uh and tha- that is something that we don't have to worry about here in Sunnyvale because we have this very longstanding legacy and tradition. Of fiscal responsibility. Another thing I think works really well is our Department of Public Safety. It's a really unique institution. I think it spared us a lot of problems that other police departments have faced. One thing that I don't think is working so well is our study issue process. I think that it's currently overly cumbersome. And that it is so slow that uh frankly, a lot of good ideas sort of die in the cradle there. Uh and so we really need to be looking at how we can streamline our study issue process and what we can do to fix that because, well, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Appreciate you understanding that. That was good. All right, so let's say a District Five resident comes to you with a funding request. For a multicultural event, how do you handle it?
So, you know, the first step there is to talk to staff, you know, council has a set aside fund that we can help use for this. There's also uh community grants. That uh the city provides. And so one of the issues is that, you know, they basically doubled the size of the community grant fund several years ago, but since then they haven't increased it. And so that's led to some shortfalls on the community grants. I think we need to be looking at improving that and funding that better. Um, so fundamentally, I'd like to see more funding there so that we can better support these community events. And then what I would do if with the resident is, you know, I'd sit down, I'd talk to them, I'd make sure they're in touch with the rev- relevant departments and city staff. I'd make sure they're in touch with the mayor. Uh and, you know, essentially work on making sure that there aren't any logistical snags, that nothing gets tangled up in bureaucracy. And that everything goes off without a hitch.
All right. And this next topic is Caltrain. What's happening with the Caltrain grade separation and why is this project necessary?
Okay, so Caltrain grade separation is a very big deal. It's tied to electrification and high speed rail. City Council just approved plans for grade separation at uh Mary. Um, which is gonna be an underpass with a jug handle curve uh to keep Mary connected to Evelyn. And to keep it under the tracks. And this is so, and there is a meeting next Tuesday about what they're gonna do about the Sunnyvale Avenue crossing. This is important because with electrification, the trains are going to be going much faster, over eighty miles an hour. And there will be more of them, which means the gates will be down longer. And with high speed rail, some of those trains will be going over a hundred miles an hour. And you cannot have at-grade crossings with trains going that fast. It's not safe. You will have vehicle strikes, you will have pedestrian strikes. And so it is really important we get this right. Uh, you know, with the Sunnyvale Avenue grade separation, I support the bicycle pedestrian only option. I believe it's considerably less expensive. It will be easier to implement. And it will actually cause less disruption, in my opinion, to our traffic patterns. Uh, thank you very much. I can go on on this.
Okay, well, thank you. That was the stop. That was, thank you. All right, good. Next topic, village centers.
All right.
What are village center developments and tell us about any in District Five?
So the village centers, it's a proposal from several years ago. That added to our general plan to for essentially transit oriented development, mixed use. The original idea was essentially, you know, you'd have ground floor retail with apartments on top. And that this would be cited on a lot of sort of our older strip malls. Um, and so there are two village centers locations in District Five, one at Maude and Matilda. And the other at on Dwayne, it's the it's the Fair Oaks Plaza, even though it's on Dwayne. Um, and so the challenge with the village centers is frankly, they didn't get the mix right when they first did it. And so instead of ground floor retail with apartments or condos, we're seeing townhouses. With the retail shoehorned into a corner. And there's a very serious concern that if we don't fix this, the retail will be wiped out. And so it's really, they're reviewing the Village Center Master Plan now. I have a number of ideas on what we can be doing to preserve the retail in those plans. Uh and that's something that's very important that we get right going forward.
All right. Now this next topic, you have ninety seconds to answer. And this is regarding the study issues. So what study issues in the pipeline for District Five would you support? And what new ones would you propose and why?
Okay, so big one that's in the pipeline right now, it's the one I proposed, it's actually going forward, it was approved. Is the Caltrain uh, the Caltrain Bicycle Pedestrian Access One. Uh, that's something I think is very important, uh especially since the northern access to that Caltrain station is preferable. Um, one that I would propose and support is a complete streets uh initiative for Fair Oaks. I think Fair Oaks is an extraordinarily unsafe street and we really need to re-envision it. Uh, something else, excuse me, that I recently proposed, actually. Uh, just at this past week's, the last week's BPAC meeting, was a Safe Routes to Parks Master Plan. Our Active Transportation Plan includes a Safer Routes to School Master Plan. With bicycle and pedestrian improvements for each of the public schools in Sunnyvale or that serves Sunnyvale students. I would like us to do the same thing for our parks. And what inspired this is when I was having my campaign kickoff at Fair Oaks Park in June. I had my, I was driving, I was hauling food that I had picked up. And I saw not one, not two, not three, but four pedestrians sprinting across Fair Oaks to get to the park. And for the, those of you know, you know, we very recently renovated this park. It's got the magical bridge, the All Ages and Abilities Playground. It's a beautiful park and it's not easily accessible because there aren't enough crossings uh on Fair Oaks. And so this is a really serious problem. We need to make sure that all of our parks are accessible, walkable, bikeable, ADA accessible, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Now this next one will go shorter, we'll go thirty seconds on this one. What would you say to a parent in District Five asking about the need to have a high school in District Five?
I'd say you're absolutely right. And, you know, it's not an easy problem to solve. Getting a new high school is something that's gonna, you know, it could take decades. But the loss of Sunnyvale High School was forty-five years ago was a tragedy, the closure of that. And it was a horrific mistake and we do need a high school north of the tracks. It is not fair, it is not equitable to our students. To force them to schlep all the way to Fremont and we see this, you know, we see the results of this in student attainment scores. And so I think we absolutely need to be working to bring a high school back to North Sunnyvale.
Thank you. Now you're back to sixty seconds on this question. If elected, how would you get various input from neighborhoods in the city? And how would you make sure their concerns are included in council decisions?
Very good question. So the first thing is it starts with going to the neighborhoods. I've been attending the Snail and San Miguel Neighborhood Associations for the past uh meetings for the past two years now. Um, and I've been talking with them regularly. Uh about the issues that are facing their communities, about things like traffic, about things like safe routes to schools. Uh and so. It starts with showing up, it starts with actively consulting with them. And so my pledge is as council member. Any issues that are addressing, that are impacting District Five neighborhoods, I will be proactive in reaching out to the neighborhood associations. I intend to hold regular office hours and town halls so that residents can bring their concerns to me. And I believe that, you know, it's when we're talking about these issues, the standard approach of just mail a postcard to everything within five hundred feet. That's not enough. We really need to be going out into the community. We need to be, you know, having, you know, sticker boards at ethnic markets and at other local institutions. And so that's something that I feel very strongly about and I'll work hard on.
Okay. Um, this one's dropping to thirty seconds. Just what are some of the communities of interest in your District Five?
Okay, so District Five was designed specifically to uh maximize Latino citizen voting age population. That was a major part of the concerns there. Um, you know, we're a heavily renter district. Uh, some of the communities of interest, obviously the Neighborhood Association, Snail, San Miguel, Hazelheads, Victory Village, and I believe there's a new one in. Vic uh North Murphy. Um, and so this is just some of the communities of interest that make up District Five.
Very good. All right, next question has sixty seconds for the answer on traffic. With the construction of three thousand new units on Dwayne and three hundred new units on Santa Lesso. What plans do you have to minimize traffic congestion?
Okay, so fundamentally, if we want to minimize traffic. We need to be really emphasizing walkability and bikeability. We need to be getting folks out of their cars. Uh, and so that's a, there's a number of things that are required for that. First is infrastructure. You need safe contiguous sidewalks that are ADA accessible. You need bike lanes that are more than just paint. You need actual safe, comfortable bicycle facilities. People will not ride if they do not feel safe riding. Okay? You also, it's also a land use thing. Remember the village centers, you know, making sure that we're integrating retail with housing reduces car trips. You know, before I lived in District Five, I lived at Fair Oaks and Tasman in the apartments up there and I could literally walk downstairs to the grocery store. That meant I wasn't driving. You know, also, you know, further emphasizing work from home, further emphasizing TDM. Uh, because most of our traffic isn't from residents, it's from office commutes. That's what's really driving traffic is work commutes. So I'll stop there.
Okay. All right, so then the last question in this series, you have ninety seconds to answer it. How can the water usage be reduced in Fair Oaks Park with the new renovations?
Okay, so the good news is they've already done quite a lot in terms of water reduction at Fair Oaks Parks, just by having those uh playing fields made of turf. Right? But fundamentally, when we're talking about water use, grass is the enemy. Okay, and so anytime that we are looking at our water use in parks, we have to be saying, okay, where do we actually need grass? Where can we be using native landscaping instead, native species? Biospells is something you'll hear about. These are sort of trenches planted with native plants that collect rainwater. Uh, help with stormwater retention, that's something else that we can be doing. But fundamentally, what we need to be looking at is we need to be making sure, and this is not just Fair Oaks Park, this should be on all public property. You know, we're using AstroTurf where appropriate. And that we're using native species where appropriate and that we're really, really thinking critically about how much grass we're planting.
Very good. All right, so that completes this section. And now we can bring um Satim back on. So Satim, if you can join us with your video and microphone on. And now we ask the audience if you would please submit any questions that you have for the candidates in the Q and A section. You hover the bottom of your Zoom, you'll see Q and A, click on that and type it in and send it to us. We do have one that's queued up. But uh we could use more questions, so please take a moment to submit more questions for us while we get ready for this part of the program. Good, well, welcome back. And so now for this part, as I mentioned, we'll answer, sorry, I'll ask you questions that have come from the audience. We've asked them to type in into the Q and A and since Satim went first for that first part, Richard, I'll have you go first for for this first question and then we'll just go back and forth. So I see the the one question that's been put in. Uh, from Lauren, thank you very much for submitting this. District Five is home to a regionally significant equity priority community. Meaning it has a higher concentration of people of color and low income households. How will you, as council member, ensure the people in District Five who are low income and those who aren't currently involved in politics. Have their concerns heard and addressed?
All right, well, this is a very serious issue and I think it starts by being in the community, by knocking those doors. By, you know, having community outreach event, by being accessible. And by being proactive about it. It's not just enough to say, oh, well, nobody called me about this. If you know something is going to affect a particular apartment complex, you go there and you talk to the residents, right? So that's a major part of it. Um, you know, beyond that, like, we need to be making sure that our residents are protected. So I'm in favor of us looking into things like a rental registry. To, you know, many of our most disadvantaged residents here, they're renters. And making, you know, let's start to collect the data. So that we have a better understanding of the challenges they're facing. So that's a major, that's something else that we should be doing as well. But fundamentally, what it's about is it's about going out into the community actively soliciting feedback. And actively working with the residents. One other thing, uh childcare and translation services and public events.
Thank you. Satim.
So I think fundamentally, we have to build housing that's more affordable. And that that in uh giveaway for the low income folks to have a, you know, kind of path to ownership. Um, i- it's good that, you know, uh we want to have rent registry and all. But I think e- eventually, I think essentially, a lot of even, you know, people who are actually working in Sunnyvale. Aren't able to afford to live in Sunnyvale, even rental wise. So we need to kind of. Take a little step back and perhaps look at building housing that is low cost and and affordable to the lower folks. Uh, who can either rent or move in. And then also um. Uh, not build so much of the high end housing where people are just coming in and and, you know, uh, building, you know, having to pay like five thousand dollars for an apartment. Right?
Good, thank you. Sorry, something in my own middle of that. Thank you. All right, so now Satim, we'll have you go first on this next question. And thank you, Peggy. How do we improve traffic safety considering that some of the problems are because of excessively wide. Or narrow roads that make changes difficult?
So I think the there's, this is a very fairly complex problem. And one of them is that we need to start getting people out of their cars and on to other modes of transportation. That includes, eh either it's a shuttle service that we have that takes people from Caltrain to their workplaces. Uh, or it's, you know, uh having a shuttle service that takes the residents uh all around the city. Uh, to do their common chores, like getting groceries and uh and you know, uh, picking up their dry cleaning. Um, a- and the other, on top of that, we need to start addressing more and more roads to have alternate commute possibilities. Either it's bike lanes, protected lanes for around the school area where kids are biking in and taking alternate commute and making it safer. And then also have a public safety potentially be part of that commute as in, you know, riding bikes or or alternate commute. And and learning where the issues are and figuring out how to best uh deal with. Yeah, and and making it safer for rest of the community for different.
Thank you.
My time's up, sorry.
That's okay. Richard?
All right, so a number of things. I think fundamentally, this starts with policy. We have a number of policies on the books that state that when we're talking about street design, this is what this is about. That safety has to come first, that pedestrians and cyclists and public transit are to be prioritized over private automobiles. We have these policies on the books, they are not consistently enforced. As council member, I will insist that they are consistently enforced on upgrades to our, whenever we're discussing upgrades to our roads. You know, whenever we slurry seal a road, we should be looking at what complete streets proof improvements can we do as part of re- redoing that road. Something else, you know, I think that we need to be looking at increasing the amount of resources we're devoting to traffic enforcement as part of the Department of Public Safety. You know, uh, my opponent, Satim, mentioned alternate modes of transportation. Fundamentally, we need to make these the primary modes of transportation. We need to make it so that this is a world-class city for cyclists and pedestrians. And that it is so easy to get around on bike or by foot that you don't feel like you have to drive.
Thank you. And if anyone else wants to plug in some more questions in the Q and A, I did just get handed one. Have you interacted, sorry? This will start with, oh, and I just lost my place here. How we go?
That's me, I think.
You, Satim. Okay, Satim, you'll start with, have you interacted with neighborhood leaders attending neighborhood events? And how do you contribute to neighborhoods in District Five?
So I am familiar with all the local neighborhood area and and parents and uh and teachers. And some of them actually do live in uh our neighborhood and they teach at Bishop. Uh, I go to the regular events that are hosted and 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 talk to them. Not not just as somebody like who's running for an office or not, it's just more trying to figure out how they're doing. You know, what what things they're seeing that that are impacting them. Uh, either whether it's in the school or whether it's it's in their daily life, how their life is changing. So that, you know, if they need additional help, that that, you know, uh potentially I can give or. Uh, if I become a councilperson, that city may be able to provide or point them to city services that. Uh, that'll be helpful to them. So I'm constantly active, I know all my neighbors. Uh, and and we always are looking out for each other, for our kids, uh and ride sharing whenever possible. Uh, to different places for events when when, you know, kids have the same kind of things going on. Uh, that's how I've been working with the, our neighborhood and our our neighbors.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and Richard?
All right, well, as I said earlier, I've made a point of attending as many of the Neighborhood Association meetings in District Five as I can for the past few years. Uh, I'm honored to have the endorsement of Snail Neighborhood Chair Valerie Suarez and San Miguel Neighborhood President, uh John Akeston. Um, you know, I think that, you know, one of the things that I've really made a point of, you know, attending these meetings. And not just the meetings, but the events, you know, I was at the Hazelheads Cookout last week, a fantastic event. You know, National Night Out. You, it's really important. That, you know, as council members, as members of the community, that we are attending these events and that we're helping to not just attend them. But to help promote them, help get the word out in the community. Uh, and help, you know, boost the neighborhoods themselves because, you know, a big problem in the neighborhood associations is. You know, you have neighborhood rep- associations representing a thousand homes and it's hard for them to get more than five or six folks in a meeting. And so it's really important to boost those, uh, well, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. All right. So now this next one, um, Richard, we're gonna have you go first on this question. What is your perspective about Moffett Park and what will you do as a council member regarding this project?
Okay, so Moffett Park is absolutely critical to our future as a city. We're talking about two square miles of land, which right now is mostly office and parking lot. And this is complicated by the fact that it's in an ecologically sensitive area. So the Moffett Park specific plan is envisioning adding quite a large amount of housing there as well as some office space. And I advocated to increase the amount of housing that was successfully advocated to increase the amount of housing being studied from sixteen thousand to twenty thousand minutes. As council member, I will work to prioritize housing over office in Moffett Park. Because right now our housing crisis, the cost of living is being driven by an excessive jobs to housing ratio. We have too many jobs and not enough homes. So beyond that, this is a tremendously ecologically sensitive area. And we need to make sure that where we, we are building in ecologically appropriate areas, that we are setting things back from the bay. That we are collecting resources used to help mitigate sea level rise. And that, you know, we are ensuring that this is a long-term sustainable project.
Thank you. Satim?
So that's one of the main reasons uh I've decided to run for the office is the development that is uh coming up in Moffett Park area. Uh, and there's a tremendous amount of office space that's being allocated to be built. Uh, it'll add additional thirty to fifty thousand office spaces. And that's equivalent, and we today, on a daily basis for pandemic, you used to get eighty thousand people coming in to work in Sunnyvale. So we're basically by adding the Moffett Park's uh specific plans, uh office space, we're adding fifty percent more capacity for all of our roads, uh for a lot of our services. And so my pro- proposal, and if I were to be elected, uh, I would try to minimize the amount of office space and still increase the housing while trying to protect the maximum amount of the space. And this, the, the, the protecting the wetlands, it's not, it's not something good or, you know, because just it's good. But it's actually financially uh better to have wetlands that'll take the flooding as it comes in, rather than build things there or build. Uh, sorry, stop the, stop came up.
Sorry, the stop came up. You're right. Thank you. Um, all right. So now the next question, we will start with you, Satim. Sixty seconds again. What will you do to protect our environment, including water conservation strategies?
So, uh, first of all, we need to do a study to see how much, what is the impact of the Moffett Park plan? And that is the most sensitive area we have ecologically speaking. That it's the, it's the wetlands that are there and the wildlife it supports. And the potential future protection it will provide against uh the sea level rise that is absolutely coming. And I would continue to um, uh, promote the, uh, the, the brown water use to uh, you know, to water the parks, uh, to educate people about how much water it takes. Uh, you know, uh, that, that is, that is wasted in their daily, you know, life that they can preserve possibly. Uh, maybe a support, uh, lawn replacement. And that any new area that goes in, uh, any new development that goes in is ecologically sound and a zero uh, you know, new water use, uh, or, or minim- minimize that. Uh, with, you know, saying no lawns or, or native plants that are used, that use a lot less water, uh, and still make the city look beautiful.
Thank you. Richard?
Can you restate the question real quick, Elaine?
Sure. What will you do to protect our environment, including water conservation strategies?
All right, the fantastic, very important question. You know, one of the things that I was very closely involved with, with livable Sunnyvale and the Democratic Club was advocacy around our latest ru- uh, round of reach codes. Which is something that the city does periodically. And what this essentially does is this allows us to put stricter environmental regulations into our building code. And last year, round of reach codes, which I believe was twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, the emphasis was no new natural gas. We are going to go all electric on everything pretty much wherever we can. The next round of reach codes that we need to do needs to be all about water. That means things like permeable pavers, big bioswales to collect storm, storm water. It means things like rainwater catchment systems. It means gray water reuse. It means expanding our purple pipe network so that, you know, we can have the recycled water can be used for more landscaping. It means, as I said, aggressively restricting new lawns, new grass. Uh, and doing everything that we can as part of that to push on water conservation. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with you, Richard. Many snail residents complained about removing parking along Maud Avenue to add bike lanes and overflow parking has now negatively, sorry, I'm not reading this right, let me try it again. Many snail residents complained about removing parking along Maud Avenue to add bike lanes. And overflow parking has now negatively affected surrounding neighborhoods. Do you agree or disagree with this change?
You know, as a member of the B-PAC, we did review the Maud Avenue bicycle lanes and we did vote in favor. And one of the things I did before those changes came forward was I engaged proactively with the Snail Neighborhood Association about, you know, the issues on Maud, about what they might like to see there. Uh, and I have absolutely heard from residents, you know, the issue of the parking impact beyond that. I've seen a consistent problem with people parking in the bike lanes illegally. And so, you know, one thing that I think that we need to be doing, the city does have a parking permit program. And I think that that's an example of where we can be doing proactive outreach. Is to residents in these impacted neighborhoods saying, hey, we do have a parking permit program. Here's how you sign up for that. So that's something I think that we could do to help alleviate the issues there. I do think it, and continue to believe it is important to have bicycle lanes on Maud because it is a major connector. It is a major part of the uh, all ages and abilities transportation network that we are trying to build out as part of the ATP. But we need to be doing more to mitigate those side effects.
Thank you. Satim?
Uh, uh, I believe that the, I think, uh, putting the bike lane on Maud, while it's a very good idea and it needs to be done. Perhaps it wasn't thoroughly thought through as the snail neighborhood folks have been saying. That, you know, it's impacted them and then surrounding area uh with congested parking where people are not finding their parking. So, uh, now that the bike lane is in, we need to go in and, and start helping them to mitigate the parking uh issue they have. And maybe that is, that, you know, maybe try to convince them to become commuters. And uh, alternative commuters, whether it's bike or, or, you know, any other scooter or electric, whatever they want to use. And so, and I think going forward, we need to be studying, you know, what is, what the impact is going to be for the people who are going to be living along the line places where there's any kind of develop, any kind of changes going on. And, you know, go door to door or go to the neighborhood association, talk to them and understand what they want and why they want it. And then try to mitigate it before change necessarily goes in.
Thank you. Thank you. So Satim, you'll go first on this next question. What kind of development do you think Sunnyvale needs at this time?
Housing. It, we need housing of all kinds and quite a bit of it. We are, you know, uh, our jobs to uh housing ratio is three point two to three point five along the Bay Area. Which is much higher than it needs to be. And if we continue to build more office space that ten years from now, we're gonna have the same problem because we're gonna be attracting more people. And who's gonna, you know, be coming through Sunnyvale or want to live here, and that's gonna push up the housing prices. So build more housing, less office space and build the hu- housing that is not just high but also affordable. So the people who work in Sunnyvale uh can live in Sunnyvale too.
Thank you. Richard?
All right. So, you know, absolutely housing and we need to be tapping the brakes on office construction. Like this is, you know, when you're in a hole, stop digging, right? First rule of holes. Uh, but let's talk about what kinds of housing we're building and what kinds of housing we need. Because right now, most of the housing that we're building is either A apartments rental or B townhouses ownership. And I love apartments, apartments are great, we need to be building more of them. But at some point, people want to be able to buy. And the problem with townhouses is you are not getting a new townhouse for less than one point six million dollars, okay? We need to be building more stacked flat condominiums. Even new condos will go, your standard two bed, two bath, eight hundred square foot, those will go for under a million. And we really need to be prioritizing that sort of development to help people get on to the housing, housing ownership ladder. And one other thing, it's just what we're building, but where. We need to be building throughout the city, not just in North Sunnyvale.
Thank you. I'm just gonna put in a plug. If you'd like to ask the candidates a question, please type it in the Q and A. If you hover the bottom of your Zoom, you can add it. So now our next question, we will start with Richard on this one. What will you do to help small businesses?
Excellent question. So there's a number of things here. First of all, you know, I'd like to prioritize more community events, which gives small businesses the opportunity to, you know, get out there, get new customers, et cetera. Uh, another part here that's really important is around land use. And so this gets back to the village centers. You know, the, we need to make sure that our land use, yes, we need to be building housing, but we need to make sure that it is not wiping out our retail as we do it. And so I have a proposal that, you know, for the redo of the Village Center Master Plan, we use density bonuses to incentivize developers to preserve the existing retail through things like stabilized commercial rents, relocation assistance, et cetera. And the reason it's important to do this is a density bonus, is they only claim the density bonus if they play by our rules. The state keeps passing laws which let them get out of our regulations. But with a density bonus, they only get it if we, if they do what we say. There is no get out of jail free card. So that's something I think is very important.
Thank you. Satim?
I think first of all, a city needs to promote the local businesses, whether they're in downtown or up in Maud or any, you know, uh, anywhere on the city. And, and that is by, uh, you know, uh, having the city council folks talk about, you know, the wonderful, great small businesses we have. Second, we need to look at the tax code. Right now, the small businesses and large businesses pay the same level of fee uh for the, for the location and whatever city fees are. I think we need to look revisit that and try to figure out what's more equitable and potentially try to reduce that. And also, uh, you know, uh, ha- hold meetings in outside venues at local places. That so people can get to know where, you know, like a, um, almost like a, if I want to say, like a business show where, you know, the folks are meeting in these places that are very useful and popular and, and needed uh for the vital Sunnyvale.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Last call for questions because those are the last ones that I have. All right, we, we are going to go into the final question then. So, um, you know, we want to turn to a question that gives you an opportunity to address something that we did not ask. So I will ask the question first of Richard. Richard, what question do you wish we had asked?
You know, I think that the one thing that we really should have asked here was a question about climate change. And a lot of our questions sort of dance around this and are about this indirectly. Traffic, housing, water use, all of that. But fundamentally, climate change is the great challenge facing the world right now. And Sunnyvale needs to act, meet that challenge. First, yes, by reducing our carbon emissions, by being greener. But also we need to be looking at climate resilience. Climate change is coming and while we can take steps to mitigate it. We cannot pretend that it will not affect us. And so that's something I think is going to be absolutely crucial in the coming decade. And so that includes things like building more housing here to reduce the impact of megaton. Like building out our active transportation plan and fully implementing Vision Zero. So that residents can walk and bike to their destinations and won't be at the mercy of gas prices. It means more aggressive reach codes on things like electric vehicle charging, on things like water use. It means, you know, being very, very, you know, committed to mitigating sea level rise in North Sunnyvale. And working with our regional, state and federal partners on that. This is a major challenge facing our city. And it is probably going to require some realignments in city priorities and realignments in budget to address it. And I believe that I've got the experience to tackle that challenge head on because this has been one of the major issues I've worked on for the past five years. So that, climate change is the one question that I wish we had asked. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Satim?
No, uh, I agree with him. And there, I've worked twenty years on all kinds of different climate, uh, lo- you know, uh, detection satellites. Uh, and instruments, and that sea rise is coming. And not the sea rise, but also the severity of the storms we're gonna see is gonna vary. The droughts are gonna be longer. The, you know, when the El Nino comes, there's gonna be a lot more water coming down. And we need to be not only just looking at the Moffett specific air, park area uh for saving the wetlands. But also getting the city prepared for all these, you know, uh, the, the emergency that is coming. Uh, of course, we want it to become green, you know, as, as Richard was saying, if, if you're digging a hole, first thing, stop digging a hole. And that's the emissions part, that we need to require builders who come, you know, who want to do anything. Or, or if you're, when you're improving streets, we want to be able to eh, add the electrical, um, that, you know, plug in uh, uh, places. Uh, so cars can be charged if needed or any alternate form of uh vehicle that, uh, that, you know, people choose to use. Uh, and on top of that, uh, start looking at what kind of, where locally we're gonna start flooding. Uh, if the El Nino event becomes a lot more drastic than, you know, than the atmospheric rivers we've been seeing. Uh, so it's a, uh, i- it's the environment we need to look at and we need to stop contributing more greenhouse gas to the uh, global warming and then start mitigating things that we know we're gonna come and see in next twenty years.
Thank you. So we have an interesting situation or development, I should say. Um, we have time left in, within our ninety minutes to take a couple of more questions that just got popped into the Q and A. Um, are you comfortable continuing or?
Absolutely, yes.
Sure.
Final one. So, all right, good. Thank you for playing. I think the audience will appreciate that as well. So this next one is a very fun one. Um, and as I'm trying to rotate, so Satim will have you go first on this one. Sixty seconds. What are your favorite things about district five?
My favorite things are the schools at district five. I know the teachers, I volunteered their whole bunch in either Columbia Middle School or Bishop Elementary. I know the teachers, uh, and then the other is the people. I know my neighbors. I talk to them all the time, every day. We look out for each other in terms of, you know, packages coming in or going out. And then also the, the, the different diverse, uh, you know, population that we have. Whether it's, you know, tres patreros, uh, you know, uh, Mex- you know, Mexican food you want or you want Indian food. So there's this wide variety of people that come from all around the world that are here in district five. And we get to interact with them and a lot of people don't realize how awesome that is. And it's like when my family comes to visit and we're going around and like, oh, we can get the Thai food, we can get, you know, Mexican food, we can get, you know, uh sushi. And, and by food, I'm saying that you get to meet all these cultures and, and talk to, and, and you understand how, you know, uh, how the world can live together and we are an example of it. District five is.
Thank you. That's great. Richard, how about yourself? What are your favorite things about district five?
You know, I think the diversity of the community is tremendous. I, that's something I really appreciate about living here. The food, the restaurants, the di- this, the vibrancy of our district is fantastic. You know, places like Saint John's, like Trace Patrillo's, like Speedy's, all of these fantastic restaurants that we have in our district. That, you know, a lot of them are tucked away, but they are really treasures. That's one thing. You know, something else that I actually really appreciate about this district is the diversity of the trees. You know, where I'm at, we've got redwoods everywhere. And as a result of that, it's probably five or ten degrees cooler in my neighborhood on a hot day than it is on, say, Al Camino. You walk through Snail or San Miguel, you see all these beautiful fruit trees. You know, you look at our parks, it's really a gem. And you know, the last thing that I'll say is our proximity to transit. You know, if I want to go to a Giants game, if I want to go up to the city, Caltrain is right there. And so, you know, I really think this is a great place to live and I can't wait to serve as council member.
Thank you. Yes, Sunnyvale's a great city. All right. So, next question, since we're doing well on our time. Do you agree with the state's new laws? Oh, sorry, Richard, you'll go first. Sixty seconds. Do you agree with the state's new laws, which are taking away local control to control housing? And replace office and retail with housing without local rezoning?
So, I have publicly advocated in the past for state housing legislation. And the reason for this is because you look at the housing crisis, it is a statewide and regional problem. And while Sunnyvale has done a very good job of building housing, many of our neighbors have not. In fact, many of our neighbors have been deeply resistant to building housing. And unfortunately, I don't see any way to fix that other than state preemption. That said, I do have very serious concerns with some of the mechanisms the state has been using to do this. By offering blanket exemptions to developers, for instance. Uh, that allows them, you know, not just to build more housing, but to get out of local zoning rules that, for instance, require that they include retail. So why am I saying, you know, we need to be using a density bonus to encourage retail? Well, because that's to ensure us against the state coming in and saying, well, your rules to require retail are now void. That's a real problem because it's not just enough to build housing. We need to make sure that we're building the services to support that housing.
Thank you. Satim?
I, I think I fundamentally oppose the idea of a state coming in and, and taking over local lands because state, especially state like Cal- state, especially state like California, that is huge and has a diverse kind of communities, rural, mountain, you know, packed cities, and and one size fits all is not the right solution. I think states should be working with cities in helping to develop uh plants and maybe helping with the cities with funding of being of, building affordable housing and and rather than being an antagonistic relationship, you know, uh, work hand in hand um to to get housing that there's absolutely needed. And and then with the i- idea of of being it affordable for all the people that are working and living in Sunnyvale.
Thank you. All right. So Santiam, you will be the uh first person to answer this next question. Um, it is, what should the city be doing in response to the unhoused issues?
It's the, another great question. Uh, I think first of all, we need to establish uh safe parking areas and the, where people can go. And by parking, I mean, you don't need to have a, a, you know, car, but a place where, which is safe, well-lit, where people can be, uh, can be, uh, you know, uh, ca- uh, can get the city services. And that's be, should be like a one-stop for all of them, wha- whatever services they need. And and if the, if there is a known place that unhoused people can go and then city is there en masse and not just with public safety, but with the community services, whether it's mental health or whether it's, uh, you know, financial need or or whatever else there, that person or people are going through, that that would be the first thing. And then even potentially providing temporary housing as they transition from whatever unfortunate event that they went through uh to ended up, to end up on the streets.
Thank you. Richard.
So fundamentally, homelessness is a housing issue. And so the long term, we need to be building much more housing to ensure that fewer residents end up rent burdened, fewer residents end up on the streets. And homelessness is a direct function of the cost of rent. And so long term, housing solves homelessness. But that doesn't solve it short term. Short term, the few things that we need to be doing. So the county is the major point of contact, a major provider of homeless services. Uh, but the city are the ones who get called first. So first of all, I strongly agree, we need to be building safe parking sites. We need to be looking into sanctioned encampment sites. This is really important. It helps get these folks services and help make sure they're in a safe, secure location. Uh, beyond that, I think that we should be looking at hiring a homeless service coordinator at the city. Because like I said, even though the county is primarily responsible for homeless services, the city is the one that gets called first. And so having someone on city staff whose direct responsibility is to work with our unhoused neighbors, I think that's something that would be really valuable.
Thank you. All right, Richard, you're going to go first on this one. I keep hearing about, no, let me try it again. Yes, I keep hearing about moving more towards electrical power and electrical cars. Where are all these electrical batteries going when they're no longer useful? And what about all the fires started doing, started due to our antiquated electrical lines in California?
Okay, um, so the electrical line fires, that's something that's a PG and E and state issue primarily. Uh, and so, you know, one of the things Sunnyvale has made a priority is undergrounding our utilities as part of redevelopment. That's something that I think that we should continue to push because one of the things that does is it reduces fire risks. In terms of where the batteries go, you know, as this become, as more and more EVs start to age out of the market, electric battery recycling is going to become a major industry. You know, the lithium can be recovered and can be reused. So that's something there. But we really, you know, one thing that's important is that EVs are not enough to solve our climate crisis. You look at the carbon cost of building electric vehicles, you look at the lifetime of a gas vehicle, it's not enough. We need to be also encouraging electric bicycles. I actually have a study issue out on secure, fire-safe parking standards for electric vi- electric bicycles, skateboards, et cetera. Because, you know, charging a lithium ion battery, there is a fire risk. And so this is something that we also need to be promoting in our community.
Thank you. Santiam.
So first of all, I think it's a bigger issue than just the batteries. It's the actual generation of electricity that's going to charge all these vehicles that are coming online. So first, we need to promote additional capacity uh of renewable energy, whether it's wind, solar. And we have, we have plenty of both of those uh in our state. And then create an infrastructure that is able to handle this high-capacity lines that will be needed uh to search all these electrical, either their vehicle or, you know, scooters or whatever. And then there are companies already out there who are dedicated to recycling um EV batteries. Uh, having worked at one of the EV uh car companies, I know that the CTO of that company left to start a recycling company for the batteries that are going to be coming out uh from those, the cars that are being built and driven now. And also make sure that the EV manufacturers build batteries that last long time. And there, 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 there's definitely ways you can manage a battery and how, how often you charge, how quickly you charge and how you, uh, sorry, time came up. But there, there is, there, there's a lot of different things that can be done.
Thank you. All right. Uh, let's see here. So we, we still have a little bit of time. This is wonderful. It's like all of a sudden, time just gave us an opportunity to ask a bunch of questions. So this next question, Santiam, you'll go first. Do you agree with the Civic Center modernization project and what should the city do next?
If a city does need to modernize its uh civic center, and I don't know what you mean by what comes next. I think the next thing would be we want to improve the library that that's been, you know, that needs to serve a lot more people now as the Sunnyvale population keeps growing by leaps and bounds. Um, and and then also try to integrate any kind of housing in in both of those areas that would be helpful to the people who are living in Sunnyvale. So, I mean, sorry, working in Sunnyvale, so they can live in Sunnyvale.
Thank you. Richard.
All right. So I do agree with the Civic Center modernization plans. If you look at our city hall, it's an aging building and it was well over capacity. One concern I had is, you know, frankly, they should have considered adding an extra story or half story to the new city hall. The marginal cost of doing so is fairly low and it would increase the lifetime before we start having, you know, impacts again. Impact, you know, before it starts getting too crowded again. For the next phase of the Civic Center modernization, absolutely, we need a new main library. And as part of that main library, I think that we need to be looking at building civil servant workforce housing on top of the library. One of the major issues we are facing as a city right now is staff retention. And a big part of that is due to the cost of living. It is hard to live in this city on a civil servant salary. You know, having some amount of housing over the library, that could, that is dedicated for city employees, that is something that could help to address that issue. And so that is where I would say we need to be looking next.
Very good. All right. I think that was a great series of questions. I've not seen more. And pause for a second because everybody came out with a bunch of great questions last time. They don't see more. All right. Well, then that means that it is time for us to wrap up the forum. So, um, great series of questions. I want to thank everybody that that submitted questions and thank you candidates for uh, your, your great answers. That was very helpful to hear your perspectives. So what I'd like to do now is um put the screen, the slides back up so that people can see your website and learn more about the candidates. If you're welcome to go ahead and turn off your um mic and video. And thank you again for participating in this. This was excellent. I'm going to share the screen now. And so now you can see their, their websites. We strongly encourage you to take a look at each of their websites to learn even more about the candidates and uh and the additional forums that they'll be doing. Um, so once again, thank you candidates. A big thank you to Snail for hosting this. It, it was a wonderful forum. And thank you for, league members for your help in this volunteer work too, and everyone for attending. So, uh, remember voting on or before November eighth, not after, on or before November eighth. Democracy, it requires all of us to participate. And part of it is getting yourselves educated on the people that are running for office as well as the ballot measures. So thank you for taking the time to do this. I hope you'll encourage your friends to watch the video of it. It will be on our website. And if you'd like to help put on these kind of programs, we're looking for new members. So you can also join us at L W V C S dot org. Um, I will leave this slide on a little bit longer so that you can take a screenshot of it, like I said, full of information to help you with your ballot. Watch for them in the mail. Remember to sign them the way it's registered on your ballot. When you see that envelope, first name, last name, or first, middle and last, you got to sign it the way you did when you register or when you did your uh driver's license. So so, uh, please remember to do that. So, once again, thank you all. Have a good evening.